Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to County Commission Meeting. It is February fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, Valentine's Day. And hopefully you didn't do like I did and forget to get your loved one a card. Because I woke up this morning to a very nice card that my wife left on the dining room table and felt like I was about that big when I left the house this morning. So Sheila, I apologize, and all these folks out here, and it's public record that I apologize to my wife for missing it on Valentine's Day. So I guess I'll be eating crow tonight. So, uh, thank you, everybody, for coming out. Uh, we're gonna start the meeting as we always do with reminding everybody, please turn off their communication devices and, uh, and then we'll open up. We got Pastor Fred Rogers here from First Assembly of God Church. Fred, we're just gonna get you a regular seat here in the house. We appreciate you coming down, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll ask Commissioner Lynch to lead us in the pledge. Y'all will please rise.
Shall we pray? Our Father, we're thankful today-
Pray for all of the promises, Lord, that you have given us. As the old song says, we're standing on those promises. Lord, today we would want to pray for all of our military that are out there protecting our freedom to be here today. Lord, we just pray your blessing upon our country. Help us, Lord, to acknowledge our need of you. Lord, thank you for this group of county commissioners and the work they do. Thank you, Lord, for, Lord, the accomplishments and attainments that we have come to in this county. And we pray, Lord, your continued blessing. We speak your blessings upon each of them today, each one that has come out. Lord, let us always acknowledge you and give you glory and honor for all that you do for us. We'll thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Pastor Fred. Lane, appreciate you leading us this morning. Uh, so we'll move on now with the approval of the minutes of the January tenth, two thousand and thirteen, and the January twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen, regular meeting, and the January twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen, rezoning meeting. I do so without objection, hearing no changes or objections. It passes. At this time, I'll start down with Commissioner Williamson for any additions to our today's agenda.
Uh, no changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Salder, Commissioner Salder.
Mr. Chairman, under economic development, I'd like to have two add-ons. One is, uh, brief discussion about the Greater Pensacola Region Vision 2015 Plan. And then number two, uh, business industry recognition.
Okay, we'll add them on as number two and three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Melvin?
No change, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynch?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Staff? All right, I do have a couple, just FYI items that we'll cover at the end of the administrative committee, and also one item to add to the engineers' report discussion, and the engineers' report that I've handed you some backup on, uh, on that. All right, we get to start this morning out with, uh, some proclamations for Rotary Day, presentations of Public Service Employee of the Year, and then at nine-thirty, we'll come back to a public hearing. So we'll go ahead and do our proclamations first. It's my privilege and pleasure to read these proclamations, and these are, again, for Rotary Day. Whereas Rotary International was founded February twenty-third, nineteen oh five, in Chicago, Illinois, is the first and the largest nonprofit civic or service organization worldwide, comprised of over one point two million professionals and business leaders and more than thirty-three thousand clubs in two hundred countries. And whereas the spirit of its motto, "Service Above Self," Rotary International and its individual clubs have provided countless hires of community and humanitarian service, benefiting not only individual communities but the world at large. And whereas Rotary is the largest privately funded provider of international scholarships with more than four forty thousand students in a hundred and thirty countries studying abroad as Rotary Ambassador Scholars, and whereas Santa Rosa County is home of four Rotary Clubs which have maintained service above self in building and enhancing the local community, beginning with Gulf Breeze Rotary, chartered in September, on September twelfth, nineteen seventy-four; Pace Rotary Club, chartered April twelfth, nineteen ninety-four; Navar Rotary Club, chartered in nineteen ninety-five; and Milton Rotary Club, chartered in October two thousand and four. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Santa Rosa County Board of County Commissioners, in honor of a hundred and eight years of history of Rotary International and its member clubs, hereby declares Saturday, February twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen, as Rotary Day, and urges all citizens to join in honoring Rotary International, and specifically the four Rotary Clubs in Santa Rosa County for their ongoing community service and living service above self ideal. Passed and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners this fourteenth day of February, and signed by myself as chairman. And the proclamation will have one for each club. Uh, first of all, uh, the Gulf Breeze Club, and to accept that is Commissioner Lane Lynch. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've been a member of the Gulf Breeze Rotary Club for about four years or so now, and it is really an impressive group of, uh, of men and women. The Gulf Breeze Rotary Club and all the Rotary Clubs, uh, in our area do a significant amount, not just locally but internationally as well. You know, Rotary is, is an international organization. To speak for my own club, one of our, our primary, uh, activities locally is the scholarship program that we have for, uh, students from Gulf Breeze area schools. And I think this year, we may hit half a million dollars in total scholarships that have been given out to local students, uh, through the years. So that's a real achievement, and it really does help these students. They come back after they graduate college, their, their four-year scholarships, they'll come back, uh, from time to time and speak to the club about the impact that the club has had on their lives and that the scholarship has had, uh, in their college career. So I'm really proud to be a part of that club, and, uh, thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you. Our next proclamation goes to another one of our county commissioners, and that's for the Pace Rotary, and that's Commissioner Jim Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rotary Clubs are alike and different in many ways. Everybody has the same goals, and we approach them from different angles. Most of us are very interested in educating our young people. I've had the privilege to serve in the Gulf Breeze, no, I'm sorry, in all the clubs except Gulf Breeze. I, uh, was a member of the Navar Club. It was a lunch club. I have to have a breakfast club, so I transferred my membership to Pace, but in the interim, I was a seed member to help start the Milton Club. Commissioner Lynch touched on a lot of the highlights. One of the things that I'm particularly proud of that Rotary does, that the general public rarely hears about, is that the Rotary Foundation has structured itself such that one hundred percent of the gift goes to whatever the donor says it goes to. And the way we do that is we set the money aside for three years, and we operate the trust on that interest, and it, it's a hundred and eight years old now, so it's been there a long time. And when your, when your gift matures, when it comes out of that three-year period, uh, whatever it was, if it was a dollar, if it was a hundred million dollars, uh, it goes to precisely what you said. Bill Gates and his wife, uh, have challenged us, and we're very close to meeting the challenge, but they're gonna dump about thirty million dollars into a children's health program. And, uh, is it three hundred? I stand corrected, three hundred million dollars. So, uh, that's, that's what it's all about. You can't, you can't make a Rotarian. You have to have, you have to find somebody with a heart for people and, uh, get that person to be a Rotarian. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Melvin. Thank you both for your service, and, uh, now we'll talk, the Navar Rotary Club, Brad Riley. Brad, come forward. Brad, if you'd like to say a few words?
The Navar Rotary Club is, locally, uh, we put our efforts towards the kids. Uh, most of what we do in the Navar Club, which is a lunch club that meets at Hidden Creek on Thursdays, we put our efforts towards scholarships for Navar High School kids, as well as, uh, other activities that go on within our area. Currently, we're providing four one thousand dollar scholarships for the kids, two for the general population, and two for ROTC cadets. We do have a pretty close connection with the ROTC group in, uh, and at Navar High School, and we're just honored to work with the community. Uh, we appreciate everything that you've said here, and we appreciate, uh, the recognition for our local clubs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final recipient this morning is, uh, one of Santa Rosa County's loyal and long, lifelong citizens, and I don't know how this guy could get involved in how, many more things in the county, but unless they clone him, and a couple more, but that's Bubba Drinker. Bubba, Bubba's representing the Milton Club this morning. And if all of you would now come up, or, well, Chairman, my fellow commissioners, and Bubba, if you'll come up here, we'll get a, Brad, if you'll come up, we'll get a picture. Bubba, pleased to be here. Would like to make some comments. There you go.
Okay. I'm not gonna reiterate what the other folks have said already about Rotary. Everyone knows that we serve the, the youth, and we're very proud of that. And we are the youth club, and I'm the old man in the club, so. But Milton Rotary Club, which, uh, the district we're in, goes from Alabama down to nearly Gainesville, and we're proud to say that the last three years, our club's been the club of the year, two of the last three years. So we're very proud of our club, our membership, and, uh, several of your commissioners have come and spoke to us, and we appreciate that, and we invite every y'all, all y'all to come, any Tuesday at noon at the Red Barn to join us. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Salder?
Everybody does a great job, but, uh, I just wanted to also let everybody know that Bubba Drinker, a few weeks ago, was chosen as the Santa Rosa County Chamber of Commerce Man of the Year for his community involvement and his community leadership, and don't blush.
Well deserved. Great to call you a friend, Bubba. Appreciate that. All right, we'll move on now to presentations of Public Service Employee of the Year of two thousand and twelve, and, uh, Mr. Gomillion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I thank you for the opportunity to recognize our employees of the year and, and take the opportunity to thank all of our employees in public services and, uh, the, uh, I think one thing I'd just say in general is that the common theme really, uh, I'd say about all three of our employees here, and that'll be noted, is that during, during obviously the last few years, we've been in a downsizing mode, and, and, uh, what you find is that we probably staffed adequately for normal circumstances, but then when, when times, when people are out sick, especially long-term illness, or when people, uh, changed jobs, it really, uh, you, you need some folks to step up, uh, at that point, and that's, uh, probably a common theme among these three employees that are here today. We do have, uh, three candidates for the two thousand and twelve award, and, uh, I'll just call them, uh, in order of their, uh, quarterly award during the year. Chris Hall, Chris, if you'll stand. Chris Hall is our, uh, is currently a shift supervisor in our Emergency Management Communications Center. Chris has been employed with Santa Rosa County for six years in, uh, in Emergency Management, and, and particularly over the last, uh, two years, uh, Chris has, uh, we have, uh, had a number of employees in that center that have, uh, had, uh, long-term illnesses and, and other, uh, illnesses, and, uh, so there's been some challenges to, uh, staff at an appropriate level in our communications center. Chris has been recognized for his willingness to, to do what it took during that time to fill those gaps, to fill that role. Uh, he was not a supervisor at that time, and he, he stepped into those roles and, and filled them, and, uh, was very faithful to serve in that capacity. Chris has been recognized for his positive attitude and, and his willingness to take on a leadership role, particularly with the training, and, uh, which is so very important, uh, especially with new employees coming along. And, uh, so Chris is just, uh, exemplifies, uh, the type of employee that we all desire to have and need in our organizations and, and in this county. And we're just so very proud to have Chris, and we're thankful to have him as, as one of our employees. Okay, Chris. Our next, um, our next employee is Leslie Statler. Leslie, if you'll stand. Leslie currently, uh, serves as a senior planner in our Development Services Department. Her primary role is as a commercial planner viewer and project manager. Leslie has worked in development services for eight and a half years, and previously, uh, has served in various roles in our development services, primarily, previous to this, was the, uh, this main staff for our zoning board and zoning-related issues. She's served in a number of capacities, uh, in that department. Her job, as, uh, as I've mentioned initially, has been challenging over this last year with, uh, a number of job, uh, changes. She has been placed in a position of trying to bounce a couple of jobs, and sometimes three jobs, and train new employees to do the, uh, other tasks, the zoning board staffing and, and that sort of thing. And so it's been a real challenge to meet the primary goal of, of serving our customers that we're working with every day in development projects, and to try to, uh, work on some of the other longer-term, uh, topics. And so Leslie's been one of those employees that, when she has been willing to do what needed to be done in order to keep the ball rolling and, uh, and, and to get the department to work as it should. So we're just very proud and thankful to have Leslie as one of our employees. Thanks, Leslie. Our next candidate is Janice Milton. Uh, Janice works in our Animal Services Division. Uh, she, she's a public services specialist in animal services, and in that, she works at a front desk role. And I'll say that in all of our offices, I have a, a special appreciation for those front desk people. They're sorta at the front line, uh, they don't have anywhere to dodge or go or get behind, it's just whatever comes, you get it, whether it's a phone call or a angry customer. And so I really have a, uh, particular appreciation for those folks that work out on the, on the front desk in all of our offices. Janice has worked for animal services for eleven years. Uh, she has been a very steady and a, and an employee that was willing to do what it took to, uh, to just get the job done, a job done. She is, um, she's known for someone that really listens to our customers and exhibits a genuine concern for their issues. As you, as you might imagine, in animal services, we get, uh, many customers that are very passionate, very emotional about situations, and so we need good listeners, and she has been one of those and is very recognized as one of those. She's also been recognized as a real team player. We've also dealt with some absences in, in that office over this last year, and she has been very willing to do those things needed to, uh, to continue to have that office function at a high level. Uh, she has also been recognized as an employee that's willing to volunteer outside the office. She volunteers a lot to, whether that's, uh, education, animal education, or adoption, uh, events outside the office, and so she's been very willing to do that, and we're thankful to have, uh, Janice as one of our employees. And so as, as in every year, it's, it's difficult to choose between those employees that are stepping up and stepping out and doing those things above and beyond what's just the minimum required. But, um, this year, we would like to announce that Janice Milton is our two thousand and twelve Public Services Employee of the Year. Janice, if you'll come down.
One rose and briar patch.
Thank you very much. What do you think of this? Twelve years, actually, I think, but, who's counting? But I love my department, I love everybody I work with, and I just do anything I can to help with my job and the public, and just thank you very much.
Thank you and all our employees that are out there every day, and, uh, you guys do all the heavy lifting and make Gold Million look good, so, thank you. Yeah. All right, we'll move on now. Y'all get back to work, go on, go. All right, uh, in a few minutes, we'll have, we'll come back to our pu, I didn't mean that, I was just kidding. We'll come back at nine-thirty to our public hearings, and, uh, until then, we'll go ahead and start with, uh, economic development. Commissioner Salder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three items today. First is recommend reappointment of Joshua Dersch to the Workforce Escarosa Incorporated Board of Directors, and I would move approval without objection.
Hearing noted, passes.
Mr. Chairman, my next two items are basically information items. I wanna kind of flip, uh, the two of them in case he has to go back to work, make sure we have milk in the community. You'll understand that in a few minutes. Uh, it's very appropriate this morning, we're, as we're recognizing, uh, different people for their different accomplishments. Uh, today I want to, uh, recognize Walmart and Steve Williams, who is a Walmart manager. A few weeks ago, at the Santa Rosa County Chamber of Commerce Annual Leadership Banquet, Walmart was chosen as the Chamber's Industry of the Year, and Steve was chosen as the Community Leader of the Year. Not often do you have such a good corporate citizen in your county. We're very fortunate to have Walmart, and I think it's about four hundred, five hundred employees, and Steve is extremely active in the community, uh, even though he is a former Marine. I don't, I don't think you can have a former Marine, once you're a Marine, you're always a Marine. But, uh, Steve and, uh, the Walmart employees, the associates out there, they're very involved in the community. Walmart was, uh, a major contributor to the East Milton Boys and Girls Club, uh, of East Milton, with a very large grant that made that, uh, program possible. Uh, they're very involved, uh, with our veterans. On Veterans Day, they come down and help, uh, serve the veterans when we have our hamburger hot dog cookout. Uh, they help set up the memorial down there for Veterans Day. Steve's been very involved, uh, with the Chamber of Commerce, his, uh, Governmental Affairs Committee, working closely with our Public Services Department, uh, the County Developmental Services, trying to improve business practices in Santa Rosa County. Uh, so at this time, I'd like for Steve to come forward, and you have associates with you. I just wanna say, on behalf of this board and the citizens of Santa Rosa County, how much we appreciate everything that you do, and Walmart does, all your employees, and most of you know that we have in Santa Rosa County a Santa Rosa Veterans Memorial Foundation. Uh, it's, it's non-governmental, it's, uh, nonprofit, we have our own five oh one three C. We raise money to assist our veterans with unmet needs. We also have a program called Vets to VA Clinic where we provide door-to-door transportation to qualified veterans who cannot get to the VA clinic over in Pensacola, and then we also do some promotion, uh, of our veterans memorial. Uh, we depend on businesses like Walmart and individuals like Steve and other people to help fund our foundation so we can provide those services to our great, uh, veterans who have fought for this country. And I think today Steve, uh, wants to make a presentation to the foundation.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir. Uh, and we may not have milk and eggs, but we, I do have three things with me today. One of them is that we have plenty of Valentine's Day cards, Mr. Cole, so you're welcome to come and get those.
When do they go on half-price?
Tomorrow, tomorrow, but I can't guarantee, we may have to pull those before that. Uh, the second thing is, uh, I'm up here with Ms. Shirley Bentley and Ms. Bernie Ogletree, although I'm accepting a lot of the wards and have the opportunity to speak, uh, ladies like, uh, Ms. Shirley and Ms. Bentley here, and Ms. Shirley, Ms. Bernie, over where the rubber meets the road, so I'm honored that they're here beside me. And the three of us represent the four hundred and fifty associates at Walmart, and over a hundred veterans work at our, our local Walmart. So we're very honored, uh, to stand here today and present, if, I guess, if Mr. Ralph can come up? Can I bring Ralph up?
Oh, it's money, I'm coming.
It's money. That's the third thing I have with me, is a, is a check for five thousand dollars to give to, uh, the, um, Veterans Affairs Committee, um, Veterans, I'm sorry, the Santa Rosa Veterans Memorial Foundation, and, and I just wanted to say, uh, uh, Mr. Salder, thank you for your leadership on that, that issue, and for the public that may not know, there's been several times when there's been issues that come up in the community, and Ralph and Commissioner Salder work without any additional publicity to work to try and help out a number of the veterans that are in, or active-duty military that are going through hard times, so I wanted to say publicly, thank you for that, and- And Mr. Ralph, thank you for what you're doing.
We appreciate that very much.
Steve, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Steve, could I get you and your two associates to come up here and bring that chair with you?
Sure, please, we're honored to, yeah.
Why don't we go down there and we get Ralph?
Oh, okay, we'll come down there.
We'll come down there.
I didn't want to really get Ralph in the picture, but.
Ralph always gets beat up, but we really love Ralph and appreciate him, so. Let's hear it again for the folks of Walmart. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, it is 9:30. We'll move back now to our public hearings. We have three of them this morning. First public hearing is Amendment to Ordinance 99-22, allowing an additional homestead exemption for persons ages 65 and older. I trust that a lot of you folks probably have read that. Thought perhaps Mr. Brown or somebody from his department would be here today, kind of go over some of that for us, but it's been voted on by the citizens of the state of Florida to allow this on an amendment. If there's any comments, questions by members of the board? Seeing none, I'll open it to the public. If there's any comments, questions, members of the public? Seeing none? I'll ask our Finance Director, do we have kind of a cost to the county that was expecting effective cost to the county or didn't?
I believe the property appraiser gave the number of about $40,000, if I remember when the board originally put this on the agenda.
All right. Seeing no other comments or questions, we'll close the first part of our public hearing. Item two is proposed vacation of portion of Driscoll Road at the request of Kelly Saye. Comments or questions by members of the board? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, we'll, we'll come back to that. If you hold off just a moment on that, I'll move back to the first item and move for approval without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Now, proposed vacation of portion of Driscoll Road at the request of Kelly Saye.
Chairman, I believe that we had received one written correspondence and it was in favor of that. We had not gotten any, any other contact.
Mr. Whitfield, any problems with Public Works Department with this?
No, there's no problem from Public Works. I think we did receive one email or phone call or, we had one that was in opposition because they felt like they may be landlocked because of this, but we've reviewed this and we're not, we're not seeing that. So they may want to speak and then we can put some maps up on the screen to go over that.
Okay, I'll open it now to public comments. Yes, sir. I will need your name and address for the record and then if you have not already, Brandy, you'll need a form filled out to.
Turn the light on. Hit the button. Make the light come on.
There you go.
My name is John Pittman. I'm here to, with Mrs. Wooton and I, we live at 5225 Cox Road in Milton. And we, we spoke with Mr. C., I think that's the way he pronounces it, C. We spoke with Mr. C., I think, the day before yesterday, we were over there. Our only objection is if, if you allow this in its present form, he had, he had lines marked out where he might want to put a gate. This would effectively landlock any entrance to our property at, at 4102 Driscoll Road. And he did agree that he would move the gate back where we would have access to our property there at 4102 Driscoll Road. And, but in its present form, you know, I don't, I don't want to be landlocked or have our property landlocked. We share a common driveway with him to the property that he just purchased next door to us, so if he would just.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Let me get rid of this.
I didn't even know I had that with me. But if he would agree to move the gate back, you know, 20, 25 feet, if that's where he wants to put a gate up, we don't, we don't have any opposition to this. But we would like this in writing that he will not put a gate where it would obstruct us or potential buyers of our property, you know, anybody needing to conduct business going in there. So that, if he'll move the gate back, we have no problem with it.
All right. Ms. Jones, can that be applied to this request for a vacation? Language to that effect?
I'm certain it can be. Is that on the east or the west side of this loop? And Mr. Whitfield may know the answer to that, but I don't. Is your, your common driveway where you want the 25 feet reserved, is that on the east or the west side of this loop?
Could we go to the next?
That would be on the east side of the, where the circle starts. Kind of, I guess if you understand what I'm saying, the Driscoll Road goes down south to the water. As it approaches the water, it, it goes left around in a circle and comes back out.
Right. Which side of the circle?
So, he already, he already has a gate on the west side and I think this, this, the lines were drawn where he wanted to put a gate and we would just ask that that be moved back where we have access to our property.
On the east side of the circle?
On the east side of the circle at the entrance. And we, we would like that in writing, please, if you don't mind.
What we can do is just not vacate that particular portion. Mr. Whitfield's got to comment on this.
If we could go to the other map, put the other map up on the screen, please.
Sir?
Okay, if you look at this map, if you, if you look at the southern portion of the loop down there and to the east of that, you see parcel number 50. That's the parcel in question here that you're concerned about having access to.
Right.
And you can see, it's not real easy to see on this particular map, but you can see our right-of-way goes into the northern portion of parcel number 49. That right-of-way is not included in this vacation. Everything that's being asked in the proposed vacation is south of this right-of-way. So I don't really see where any access is being blocked, quite frankly. I mean, it's the right-of-way, there may be a problem with it, with parcel number 50, but it's not because of this vacation. It looks like you may have to have some type of prescriptive rights from, from Mr. C. on, on parcel, on parcel 49 to get to your property. But our right-of-way that you can see on this map, that runs two lot, the northern part of parcel 49, is not part of the vacation. It's not being blocked. Everything is from the south line of our right-of-way, south.
Sir, sir, that does not reflect where he has the lines painted on the, on the asphalt out there where he intends to put a gate. That does not reflect that.
Well, where he has the lines painted is not apparently then is, is not the same as the legal description that we've acquired for this vacation because the legal description we've acquired and we can double-check, but it's south of that right-of-way.
Could I get Mr. C. to come up, please? I think, I think he and I came to a game.
Sir, hang, hang on here. Well, I'm, I'm conducting this meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, so if you, if you're done with your questioning, if you'll sit down, I'll, I'll get him to come up for us.
Well, I still think that.
All right, we understand what you're thinking.
This is wrong, this, this right here.
We're going to get her straightened out here before we do anything. Sir?
Thank you, sir. You know, when I looked at the legend, what I saw here is, is, it is a moot point. What's being asked to be vacated doesn't interfere in any way whatsoever with Ms. Wooton or Mr. Pittman's property. So, and I would not deny him access, whether it be on this lot or the property that I purchased beside this lot. I did paint lines. I was trying to let people know that it's private property. When they come through that circle, they're coming, not for the circle itself, but they're coming to access private property. So all of the land in there, when I, when I, when I actually purchased this property, there was no record of prescriptive right. I had no idea. I started asking questions because I wanted to do everything legally and correctly. And when the question came up, I think Mr. Furman took a look at it and said, well, the county repaved this road when they, when they repaved so they would have prescriptive rights because of that. But, so what I'm saying there is I, I didn't come into this buying that property knowing that there was any public access because at the time, there was no record of public access to that property. I bought it to secure the neighborhood. I have no intention of denying him right-of-way to his property, but we had such a problem at what was held, at one time, it was Driscoll Fish Camp and then Ski Land, but the drug activity down there, that's why, I, I live in the neighborhood, that's why I bought the property. There was a lot of criminal activity there. Since I bought the property and cleaned it up, I bought the one beside it, we've had six lots sell in the neighborhood since we cleaned it up. So we've made, we've made great progression, intend to offend no one, but anyway, I guess that's. But from what I'm seeing here, if he's seen it, the legend, what you're vacating doesn't interfere with him whatsoever.
Mr. Chairman, that, that is correct and that's what I'm saying. The painted lines don't have anything to do with what we're vacating. Apparently, the painted lines are in the wrong location.
Yes.
What we're vacating is south of that right-of-way and that right-of-way would be the only access that, that they have to get to parcel 50. We're not, we're not vacating any of that right-of-way. We're south of that right-of-way. So this doesn't have any impact whatsoever on their access.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. And just for the peace of mind of, of the couple here, if the line is painted incorrectly, the line does not drive where the gate goes. The legal description drives where the gate goes and we're, we're hearing that the legal description is, is.
There, again, I'm not a surveyor.
Understand.
Sir, 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 we can't have comments from the audience. If you'd like to come back up, you're welcome to, but I can't have you. If you'll come back up with a microphone, you're certainly wel, welcome to speak, but I can't.
May I, may I address Mr. C.?
Yes, sir.
Mr. C., are we in agreement? You're not having no argument, right?
Very good.
Okay.
All right.
The lines that he had drawn across the pavement there just intersect with, directly with the driveway, blocking not only my, access to my property, but also his at the same time.
Okay.
And I understand him not wanting people on his property, you know? But he has agreed that he will back the gate up. Now, whether or not it, his lines coincide with that, which I don't think they do, you know, I, I have no objection to him putting his gate up, you know? I just, I just don't want to be landlocked.
Sure. And this, this meeting is public record. We've heard our Public Works Director saying it will not affect your property. Our county attorney is making notes on that and the applicant has, has commented to that. So I don't think we'll have any problem.
Yeah. Well, thank you and thank you, Mr. C.
All right, thank you.
I will remove those lines. What had taken place, we had so much traffic down there and because of the drug activity years ago, a lot of it was negative traffic and the, having to, to deal with them was kind of dangerous for me. So what I was trying to do is just delineate that it is private property, but I will remove those lines. I didn't intend to offend anyone with the lines.
Well, we got it all worked out and.
Thanks, sir.
It's Valentine's Day. Kiss and make up. Let's go.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. All right.
Commissioner?
Ms. Jones.
In staff's discussions with Mr. Saye, there was a separate portion of his property that the county was concerned about having drainage and utility easement over and he has been agreeable to provide that to the county. I don't know that we have a signed document back yet, so I would suggest that if you were inclined to approve this vacation, that you do so contingent upon his grant of a separate easement.
Okay. Brandy, you got what county attorney said? We'll add that to the motion to move this forward. Any other questions or comments? Board members or the public? If not, then I'll move this without objection with the caveat that the county attorney added. Hearing none, it passes. Item three is proposed vacation of alleyway located between lot nine, 10, and 11 and 12 and between lots 13, 14, 15, and 16 of block 667 in the Avalon Beach subdivision at the request of Betty L. Callaway. Anybody here to comment on that? Commissioners or you have comments or questions on this? Mr. Whitfield?
This is just a narrow alleyway between, in the middle of a block in Avalon Beach and we have no objection to the vacation.
Okay. We have not received comments according to the county administrator, so hearing no objections to this request today, I move it without objection. Hearing none, it passes. At this time, we'll close the public hearings and move forward with the rest of today's agenda. All right. Item number one.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner.
I still have one item left. Economic development.
You lost your turn.
[laughing].
Okay, we'll go back to Commissioner Salter for economic development.
This is just for information purposes only. Most people know that over the last several months, there's been an initiative by the Greater Pensacola Chamber of Commerce to do a two-county economic development marketing study. Several of us attended an event over in Pensacola yesterday where they have concluded that study. It's called Vision 2015, Five-Year Plan for Job Creation for the Greater Pensacola Region. Here again, several of us attended it, heard a lot of good things about the region, not sure exactly how it's going to impact our county. So over the next several days, weeks, I would encourage each commissioner to go through this. You have copies of it. Shannon obviously has copies of it as well. And at some point in time, we'll probably need to take some kind of action on what we're going to support and what we're not going to support. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some input from our chambers of commerce and our business community on how it might impact Santa Rosa County. So at this time, I just want to let everybody know that the study's over with and encourage our board to make sure we go through it. And here again, I would suspect it to be back on the agenda sometime in the future for whatever what portion of it we're going to support. So that's just information item today only. Thank you.
And I would like to add a caveat to that. Several years ago, we made a purchase from Pullum Realty on 80-some acres of an industrial park that I, we currently call the I-10 Industrial Park. And I, I think it's only fitting for the amount of, let's call it beating up, that three of us commissioners got over that, Commissioner Salter and Commissioner Gooden and myself as being the swing vote, that that property today is, is considered by Vision 2015 and these professionals that have studied it is, that although nowhere in the Panhandle, Northwest Florida, or especially the two-county area, do we have site-certified properties, we're really in, in kind of not a real good position for economic development on our sites, but we do have good inventory. We have a means of getting that inventory up to snuff, so we do get site selection and sites, sites that are certified. But that particular site is top of the list for the best site in the two-county area. So, you know, hopefully, you know, we'll get some businesses in there and, and bring Santa Rosa County up to the forefront and continue our economic growth efforts, so, so thank you. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Salter, for your report on economic development. And now we'll move forward to the Administrative Committee. Item number one is recommends soliciting proposals for consulting services associated with the Restore Act implementation. Commissioner Lynchard, any comments on that?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just think it's time to move forward on this and get started with preparing the RFP.
Okay. I think we're going to change your middle name to Restore, so. Mr. Lynchard's put in endless hours on our Restore Act and thank you for all that time. I know it's going to benefit our county in the future, so. Hearing no objections to this, we'll move it without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item number two is recommend denial of a permit to operate a construction and demolition debris disposal facility to Blowwater Holdings SRC Incorporated due to a failure to meet financial disclosure requirements of the county. county ordinance. Members of the board have comments or questions? I'll open it now to the public. Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Chairman, Roy Andrews. It was lit up, actually. But here on behalf of the applicant, the, when we appeared before the commission on Monday with the understanding that the staff is recommending this, we had not put in place the financial assurance bond with the understanding that it had to be in place 60 days prior to operating the facility. Since that time, we have obtained and have emailed, had the bonding company email to the county attorney, the standard financial assurance bond for closing and post-closing maintenance that is required by the Department of Environmental Protection. We've also, this morning, had furnished to her an addendum to that bond that makes the County of Santa Rosa an additional named holder of the bond. And we think that we have therefore met the financial assurance requirements that set forth in your ordinance. And we'd be happy to address any questions that the board may have in regard to that. The hard copy is going to be delivered today, or it's already been delivered, I think, FedEx.
Okay. I'm going to count on our two-county attorneys.
We only have one county attorney.
I understand. I'm just trying to keep it light here.
I've tried to review this this morning, Mr. Andrews, to be satisfied myself that it meets our requirements. I haven't reached that level of comfort yet with this. My understanding of our financial assurance ordinance that we adopted last year, my understanding of it all along has been that there were two bonds contemplated, one for DEP and one for the county. This is one bond. The DEP is primary, and then Santa Rosa County is added as an additional obligee. That being the case, our financial assurance ordinance requires that the bond, the funds necessary to meet the cost of closure, post-closure care, are available to the county, and they are accessible to allow the county to close or remediate the site. I don't know, if DEP is primary on this bond, I don't know how the county would be covered.
Well, it's joint and several obligation, and the, there's one operation, the amount to close the facility and to maintain the post-closure requirements is the amount that's required by the Department of Environmental Protection regulations. And as a matter of fact, the provision of that regulation, which is incorporated by reference in your ordinance as to the amount of it, states in Section 11, Paragraph 2C, that if a local government requires financial assurance for closure, which is at least as stringent as that required by the rule, the department will attempt to establish cooperative mechanism with the local government and thereby avoid duplicative financial requirements. So the DEP recognizes that certain local governments do have these financial assurance requirements and understand that you don't have to duplicate it. You don't have to close it twice. You don't have to maintain it twice. The amount that is required for that is the amount that's set by the Department of Environmental Protection, and that's the amount of the bond. So I don't see, I mean, you'd be double paying, double insuring, and the requirements of your statute are we meet the DEP requirements. So, and based on their calculations. So I don't, and so I don't see that there would be any additional bond required since there's just one sum that's going to have to be paid, and that's guaranteed. Whether it's done by the county or done by DEP, it's only going to be closed once. It's only going to be maintained once.
The rub, I think, is that people are not happy, if you will, or satisfied with the response of DEP in certain circumstances in the past, where there've been problems with CND pits or landfills or what have you. They feel that the response that DEP has either been lacking, supervision has been lax, or that there has not been swift enough action. So if the county were primary, the county would be able to step in and take action in a quicker fashion. We're the boots on the ground. We're closer to the property.
And under the bond, and under the rider to the bond, it says if either of the entities that are the holders of the bond take those actions, which is contemplated in the bonds, if Blue Water doesn't meet its obligations, then Santa Rosa County can step forward and meet the obligations, or the DEP can step forward and meet the obligations, and the bonding company is on the hook for the amount to pay for that. That's what the plain language, simple language of the bond says. And the rider makes all those rights and responsibilities that are set forth in the DEP bond, which frankly is the form for this bond because that's the standard landfill closure bond in Florida. But we have a joint obligation rider that says that we also, or the bonding company is also on the hook for Santa Rosa County if Santa Rosa County undertakes those obligations. Now, I think your financial assurance ordinance makes it clear that the standards for closure and the standards for post-closure are those that are set by DEP. It's not something additional or otherwise set by the county. I understand your concern that the DEP may not have been diligent in requiring that in the past, but you have the right to do that under your ordinance, and you have the right to be paid for that under this bond.
Ms. Jones, have you had an opportunity to review the bond in total? And are you comfortable that the county is protected at this point and that this would be acceptable to DEP?
Without the rider, I'm of the opinion that the bond would not be acceptable to Santa Rosa County. It's the rider that gives the county any rights whatsoever, because the bond itself speaks only to DEP. The rider does make the county jointly a part of the bond. However, I am concerned that either of the parties could access all or any portion of the monies to the exclusion of the other party, which could pit us against DEP in some fashion. So that is my concern, that there is just one sum of money available to DEP and/or the county, as they might work that out between them.
And there's only one sum of money that would be required. The amount of money, of funds that are required to do the closure and the post-closure are calculated under your ordinance and under DEP based upon the regulations that are in place for closure and post-closure requirements. And that sum in this case is $872,158.40, and that's the amount of the bond. And the language of the rider says, "There shall be no liability under this bond to the obligees or any of them unless the obligees or any of them shall make payment to the principal." So if Santa Rosa County undertakes to do this, then they're covered under the bond. That's the entire purpose for having a surety bond, and that's the entire purpose for making the Santa Rosa County an additional obligee under the bond.
What was the provision you mentioned earlier?
It's in the, I think it's 62-701.730. It's incorporated by reference in your ordinance. It's that provision of the Florida Admin Code that deals with financial assurance, has the language in regard to the 60 days, and it's specifically Section 11, Paragraph 2C. Here it is.
Thank you.
And it says, "The department will attempt to establish cooperative mechanism with the local government and thereby avoid duplicative financial requirements." So, I mean, the DEP recognizes that in the event of a local government having its own financial assurance mechanism, that they're going to work with the local government to make sure that costs are not duplicated and that there's not a requirement for, an additional requirement for a bond when one's not necessary to meet the requirements of the regulation.
Has the department attempted, has the department established that cooperative mechanism that's alluded to in this...
The bonding requirement for the Department of Environmental Regulation is not put into place until 60 days before we take the solid waste. So we haven't had occasion to do that because that's not required. The requirement that we have the bond up front, as it were, is Santa Rosa County's requirement, so we're dealing with that now. We certainly will coordinate with the DEP, and their regulation says they'll work with the county.
Ms. Jones, have you had any discussions with DEP about their bonding requirements in this provision in particular, in terms of how they have cooperated with local municipalities or counties in the past?
No.
This would, it seemed to me, contemplate that the local government would be able to be primary on the bond and DEP secondary if the local jurisdiction had a financial assurance requirement.
The rider does not say that one is primary and one is secondary. It makes it a joint and several obligation. It adds an additional obligee, and it says that all, additional obligee consent to the terms of the rider by signing. All of the acts of one obligee being binding on the other, essentially what it says is joint and several liability. I don't think you need to have one, and the standard for DEP is the standard for the bond, because it's a DEP permit, it's a DEP requirement, it's a DEP process for establishing the amount of the bond through your ordinance. And you don't have separate regulations requiring certain circumstances for closing of the facility or for post-closure maintenance. It's all DEP. So, and that's what is defined in the bond as a responsibility of the principal is to act in accordance with those regulations.
I'm still looking for that simple language you referenced earlier. I haven't seen it in the bond. I'm going to, let me let my other commissioners ask any questions they have right now.
Roy, if you, any questions with Mr. Andrews while he's at the podium? Roy, if you'll give us just a moment. We got some other folks behind you that'd like to speak, and I don't see any other questions from other commissioners at this time. Give us a chance to let these other folks speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton, Florida.
Morning.
It was difficult to hear what he was saying. Am I understanding right that the bond is $800,000 that the company would have to put up?
Somebody can read it.
Approximately, yes.
$800,000 to cover what? Against what?
Closure of the pit and long-term care and remediation.
But this $800,000 is supposed to cover what kind of damages? Damages to the water or to the air quality or what?
Closure of the pit and then cleanup of the site.
$800,000 doesn't seem to be anything compared to the cost of cleanups of other kinds of CND pits or dump sites or whatever have been in the past. I mean, we've heard millions and millions of dollars as a cost to clean up damages from poorly operated or whatever sites. And $800,000 is all we're expecting this company to put up?
That is the amount calculated according to, and Mr. Andrews, correct me if I'm wrong, or Ms. Jones, that is the amount calculated according to the DEP's guidelines and the engineer that was involved. They calculate that amount. And now, bear in mind, this is only the bond for a 16-acre site. If they were to ever attempt to expand it, which I don't, I'm not saying they would be able to do under the current circumstances, the bond would increase at that point. This is only for the 16-acre site.
But my concern is the proximity to our water source, and we're only expecting $800,000 to be bonded to clean up whatever damages. I'm sorry, as a resident of Santa Rosa County, I don't see that as anywhere near enough, because the possibility of damages has to be so much greater than $800,000. Once the drinking water is contaminated, it's very difficult, if possible, to clean up. That's what I'm concerned about.
No, I certainly understand that concern.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cantu. Before we hear our next speaker, I want to clarify something that Commissioner Lynchard just said on the 16-acre site versus 160-acre. It was my understanding that their 16-acre was just kind of the tip of the iceberg, that it could be expanded to 160. So I'd like to get that clarified, please.
The application for the operational permit is only for the 16-acre site. The 158 acres that you're referring to is the bigger site, the larger site, which is covered by the development order?
Which is to install the liners. You know, in other words, it's not an impossibility to continue expanding this site beyond the 16 acres.
There's a development order that's in place for some period of time beyond now. It does expire at some point, early 2015. But in order to get an operational permit for anything beyond the 16 acres, we would have to go through this exercise again. So it's just hard to say where it might go between now and early 2015.
Thank you. All right. Yes, sir, please.
Carl Wells, 5272 Black Rose, Milton, Florida.
Hey, Carl.
As far as the drinking water, you know, and it's going to affect the drinking water.
You're going to have to speak up a little bit, Carl, please.
It will affect the drinking water. And then if the county needs the interest in a CND landfill, we have three other landfills that could be used instead of opening another one. That'll be just like the other three we have now.
Okay.
You know? And as far as the monitoring wells and all that, I mean, it's just, it's not going to be a good deal to open another one up when you have three that's closed now. Or go add a fourth one. And I don't think it's good for the whole county.
Okay. Carl, would you mind if I asked you your professional occupation? If you have no objection?
Oh, we've, we had the first CND landfill in Santa Rosa County.
Okay.
On Mule Lat Road. So, you know, it's, you'll have to manage it from forever. I mean, you know, even on the closure part, you still got erosion problems. You got to go in, you got to get the slopes right. I mean, it's, you know, we have three right now that nothing's being done with. One on Mule Lat, one on the north end of the county, one on the south end of the county. You know, why have another one? You know? So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. Concerning the bond, if there are remedial actions involved in the closing of the landfill, the bond may not be enough to cover the closing, because before it can be closed, it has to be remediated. That bond, that bond, you're not getting any of that bond money for remedial action, none of it. Call the DEP and verify what I'm saying. The same thing happened at Joyner Landfill. What was left in that pot was not enough to remediate the site and close the landfill property. So you may have $800,000 to close the landfill, but if it follows previous examples of what happens at these landfills, that landfill... previous examples of what happens at these landfills, that landfill's gonna have to be remediated first. And you're not getting any of that money if that happens. None of it, zip. So, I, I ask you to not permit this facility or put this decision off until you can get with the DEP and confirm what I'm telling you. If that pit needs to be remediated, if, if the water gets polluted, you're not getting any of that money. If it's not enough to remediate it first, close the landfill, clean the water. And if it's a joint agreement, the DEP gets that money first. Is, from my understanding, that's how it's gonna go. And if it's all used up, you don't get any. So, please either deny it today, you have enough facts, or get with the DEP and confirm that if that landfill ends up like Joyner and Coyote and Softly and needs to be remediated, you're not getting that money. Thank you.
Thank you, Wallace. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
Loretta Aiken, one-eight-two-eight Sundown Drive, Navarre. I have a concern that we're putting in the C and D pit and I understand that the owner might be interested in selling the property. And I'd rather see somebody buy it than put in a C and D pit. Fire Commissioner for Holly Navarre for eleven years. We had a fire at the fire, at the pit down in Navarre. And when they catch on fire, they give off poisonous gases. And there was a big lawsuit and everything, and I don't know where it ended. But I have a concern about my drinking water and I have a concern of other things that could happen. There's a better usage for this property. And if this gentleman wants to sell it, I would say that might be something you need to look at seriously. It'd be cheaper to buy it than it would to deal with the issues afterwards. It would make great housing there. And I'm afraid the C and D pit there will affect the property value of our industrial park and of other things in this area. So, I would say, look at it. Everybody that buys land has a right to use it as its zone. You know, they, that's why they buy land, to use it like they want. But I just feel that this is not prudent. And I would, you know, my heart goes out to the owner, but I think there's a better way to help him than help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Holly Kimbrel. I live at sixty-eight thirty Timbercrest Road, Milton, Florida. According to the Book of Ecclesiastes, chapter three of the Bible, there's a season and a time for everything. Time is an unusual commodity. It can't be saved or stockpiled. It's an equal opportunity resource. We all get the same amount of time. Time can't be seen or heard or touched. It can't be sensed directly. It remains hidden and marches on even when you're out of it, you're really out of it. Blue Water has had their season and time to do what they wanted to do. We, as a county, have moved on. This with Blue Water started maybe two thousand five or two thousand seven. We can't be expected to wait on them. We have since built a prison. We have a plan for a new arena. And both of these are cross purposes for a landfill. I think a new arena's a great idea. I think a bad idea's a private landfill. We have new information about our water and how it travels beneath the ground in that area. The landfill is cross purposes for all these reasons. Please deny the permit because their time has passed. I believe if they want to fight, it's either fight them now or fight them later, and there will be a later. Money to spend on lawyers that they've made at the expense of our environment, our county, they'll have even more later. So, deny it now for the time to deny it is now and it's never gonna get any better. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, gentlemen. Barbara Albrecht, fifteen-twenty-eight East Brainerd Street, Pensacola, Florida. I'm just returning from a meeting in Tallahassee that was the Florida Water Resource Monitoring Council meeting. And I know today's discussion is about the landfill and the potential problems that could result of that and if there's enough bond money. But I wanted to bring something to your attention. Earlier today, you were, you spoke with the citizen about DEP and you asked Lane Lynchard, Commissioner Lynchard, sorry, whether there would be a potential problem as far as you taking over the county. What I want to bring to your attention is that this council has been concerned about surface water, but they've developed two new committees.
Barbara, you're gonna have to speak up just a little bit more.
I'm sorry. Okay. I have a soft voice.
Yeah.
Your, your concern was about the bond issue, who had primacy, who had secondary, who could oversee this. And a comment was made that, that the local DEP in Northwest District may not be as engaged. And I'm here to tell you, you are correct because Tallahassee and Northwest District have very little communication. Within this council are water management districts and they are more interested in what's happening with our groundwater locally and monitoring that and having more interaction with land use. So, as this committee develops themselves, I would request, before you make a decision today on either this landfill and whether it's properly set up and even what's the drilling proposal that's going on in the blackwater that we'll be hearing more about, that we consider what kind of risk is involved, what kind of proactive measures and technology can we apply to avoid risk at all costs so that you're not out money, you know, twenty, thirty years later? We were assured with the oil drill in the Gulf that everything was covered. And we see the deep pockets that it takes to clean up things and make things right. So, we have a lot of threats facing us. And I will send this information to you so that you can engage this council that's looking at groundwater issues to make sure that we're being the most proactive and protective of your resources here. Sorry, didn't mean to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
My name's Wilbert Courtney, forty-six forty-one Geiger Road, Belton, Florida. I'd like to say that all these people have requested that the county commissioners deny this. I would like to go along with that, to deny this request. And I appreciate it if you would. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Holly.
Good morning.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Everybody sing to you. Do I just talk into this thing?
Yes, ma'am. You talk and we always listen.
I wasn't planning on saying anything. When I first read about this landfill request in East Milton, all I could think of was a few years ago, when the barges were going up and down the Hudson River, loaded with garbage and stuff, seeking a place to dump it. I thought, how disgusting at the time. As I think it would be disgusting if you okayed this landfill request. I couldn't believe you were even considering it, although I know you have to consider what is presented, since you supposedly care about economic growth. I wouldn't trust that required liner. And who would want to locate in an area where the stench could be unbearable? Economic growth would be stunted. There are already, I don't know how many landfills around that could accommodate the need. You know the saying that says, give an inch and it'll take a mile? Well, this could happen here. The request is for just a few acres. That could turn into many more. Everybody and his uncle will want to dump in East Milton. The News Journal editorial yesterday said something like, quote, "Let the people have their say," or "speak," or something like that. You are elected by the people. Thank you for letting the people have their say. And I say, listen to the hoi polloi. Deny the permit. I'm what some people call a, quote, "damn Yankee." I have been a Santa Rosen since nineteen sixty-three and have grown to love Santa Rosa. And I care what happens to it. Please, listen to the people. Deny the permit. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Carl Hudgens, thirty-four twelve Barkwood Drive. I live in Pace, but I have land in East Milton, just south of, of this piece of property. I think my land is within quarter mile, maybe half mile. I board, I'm on Highway Ninety. And I didn't get any notice of, of anything about this. I just happened to be here Monday and heard about it that way. Now, my understanding, and I, you can correct me because my information is just gathered from Monday and what I could pick up since then, but this was apparently originally permitted four or five years ago. Maybe we were notified then. I, I really don't remember that far back. Since then, I believe, there's been a wellhead protected area established now. So, I don't know how, how long, and I know y'all have to deal with ordinances and all kind of things, but I don't know how long these things can just kind of lag and then development goes on in the area. I presume, in the meantime, the huge water line down in Navarre was installed. I watched them install that. It doesn't seem like it was that long ago and they established a wellhead protection So, I think those things need to be taken into consideration. Okay, on Monday, a few things were talked about. Another thing I'm concerned about is, general knowledge seems to be that debris can be shipped in here from all over the United States, potentially, this is right close to a railway. So, my understanding is, we'll be accepting debris from all over the United States. And I don't see them funding somebody twenty-four hours a day to sit there and go through this stuff and run Geiger meters, whatever. I'm not an engineer, but checking to see if it's filled with petroleum products or filled with radioactive products or what. I, I just, from what I'm seeing, that's not even gonna happen. Maybe it should be required if anything comes in from out of state or out of our area even. But we pretty much know what's in our area. Okay, the testimony on Monday was that I understand, and, and again, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that this liner will be installed ten feet above the water table. They, all that land out there is sandy soil. They just put a, they, when I watched them dig a, a deep retention pond for the plantation woods area, they went down sixty, seventy feet there and it was all just sandy soil. I've talked to the people at the health department. They say it's perfect area for a septic tank because it leaches so well. Okay? It's good for a septic tank up on the surface because it leaches well and everything's within, probably leaches down a few feet and that's it for a one-family septic tank. But for a potential, for a sixteen-acre C and D pit, that's probably not a good thing to have, have it on sandy soil, ten feet above a water table. And then the other thing that was talked about here Monday was that the supplier of the liner says that expected leakage was twelve ounces per acre per day. So, if you got it ten feet above the water table in sandy soil and you've got twelve ounces per acre per day of leakage into your water system, on sixteen acres, that's five hundred and forty-seven gallons per year. It adds up, especially trickling day by day by day. Now, that's what the liner estimated under normal use. That's not taken into consideration. Somebody runs across the liner with a piece of equipment during installation or something and you have gasses in the liner. So, if you go sixteen acres, that's five hundred and forty-seven gallons a year going into your system. And you don't know what it is because possibly it comes from out of town. So, then if you can expand it to a hundred and sixty acres, a hundred and fifty-eight acres, you're up to over five thousand gallons of leakage per year dripping into your system. So, this is a serious situation, twelve ounce, twelve feet above the water table in sandy Now, we've talked about the fire situation in these things. We have somebody with fire experience here. So, if you have this regular leakage, five hundred and fifty gallons a year in sixteen acres, if you have a fire, what do you do? You put water on it? So, you just let, you put dirt on it and, and I've done enough debris burning to know that the way you burn something slowly is you get it started real good and then you put something over it to hold the heat in and let it burn. Let it burn, let it burn. Then, so then your liner's gone, if you had any liner left to start with after installation and the norman, normal leakage. So, we got, so the potential is we've got an eight hundred thousand dollar bond to take care of what could be a disastrous situation on top of a wellhead area that feeds, I don't know, probably over a hundred thousand people get water from that area. So, I would, I would look for any way to, to delay this thing and get it straightened out. I don't really, I think we need to get better communications with the county, with the DEP. In the very least, you, you don't make a decision today. You say, okay, we've got a serious situation here. We need to let the county deal with the DEP and we need to look at other things. If these permits have lapsed during these four or five years, however long it's been, we need to take those things into consideration because if they lapsed at any time and other developments happened with wells and wellhead protected areas, then I would think the county's obligations there would be pretty much released as far as to this people. Now, just on a moral aspect, we do, I own land. I want to do what I, I own twenty-two acres right there close by. And I want to have some, some flexibility to do what I want to do with my land. And I'm, they've changed the long-term use several times since I've owned it. You know, I've got a life to live and I can't be down there every day at the zoning department putting in my two cents worth. So, these zoning, zoning and stuff is very restrictive and I think we could do with a lot less zoning and land use restrictions that we have. But if you got, if I wanted to put something on my land that affected a hundred thousand people and people within a five-mile radius, that's when the county needs to step in and take care, take care of that situation. They don't need to be watching me if I want to build a cattle pen a little too close to the property line or, or I want to put my driveway a little somewhere else and they don't want it. That's the kind of things that we're burning up all our energy and money doing. But if we're gonna let these big things that are really what we should be concerned about, that's, those, those are the things the county needs to step up and take care of. And I appreciate it. I'd like to, you know, encourage the county commissioners. Mr. Cole had a good, I thought, a, a, a good suggestion, approach, and if that can be worked towards. I'm generally against, you know, the county buying up taxable land that produces taxes. But in certain situations where past things have happened and, and that's a prudent thing to do, I think that would, that, that needs to be looked at also. So... So, I appreciate your time, and again, I appreciate everybody, the citizens, for coming up here and speaking because it is difficult to get up here and kind of look up at you guys and speak to you, but I appreciate it.
We all put our britches on the same way as you do, so.
Thank you.
Feel free to talk. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I think I didn't give my name and address. I wouldn't want to go against.
I think we got it on record. We all right with that, Brandy?
Okay. That's right. I filled out a form.
There you go. Thanks, Chris. Yes, sir. We're gonna hear one more speaker, then we're gonna take a ten-minute recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for hearing me. I'm Ken Walker, Executive Director of Fairpoint Regional Utility, eighty-five seventy-four Turkey Bluff Road in Navarre. You guys have a big problem here with the decision, and I certainly wouldn't want to be in your seat today. About twelve years ago, we asked the county to allow us to drill a well north of Highway ninety, and the council at that time denied us the opportunity to drill north of the interstate. So, I guess what I would like to remind you of is sometime the answer is no. And I could tell you a hundred reasons why it's inappropriate to put a landfill in that area, but the decision that you need to make is, why is it a good idea to put one at that particular location? The Fairpoint well footprint will expand over the next fifty years. We've tried to get enough wells in place to last us for twenty-five years, but that twenty-five-year planning opportunity is now fifteen years. So, as we look forward to growing our company, our footprint will expand in that area, and we would certainly like to have the opportunity to move north of the interstate one day with the Fairpoint well field. So, thank you for your consideration, and I do appreciate you guys and what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? I would like to take a ten-minute recess.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I would rather us dispose of this before we take a break. Unless there's some reason not to. We're not gonna talk about it during the break. I don't see any reason to keep everyone around. I'm not satisfied that the financial assurance meets my requirements for the county and the protection of our, of our, of the intent of our ordinance, so I would move denial of permit at this time, without objection.
I would like some comments, and duly noted, we have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being a recovering CPA, as my wife calls me, I also ran the numbers as presented, although I used a little bit more conservative factor. I assumed a half of a gallon a day an acre. Those get to be large numbers. You have to assume that in for a penny, in for a pound, that we're going to look at the full hundred and fifty-six acres in the course of time. I understand the question turns on a legal issue about bonds, but just for my two cents worth, I am not comfortable with this. It has nothing to do with personalities, the people, whatever. It's just the notion of this activity in that area bothers me. Had I been on the board those ten years ago, eight years ago, I wouldn't have liked it then either. So, I'm uncomfortable with it on a number of areas, but primarily on the design leakage portion, and we all know that C and D pits, you just, you get spontaneous combustion as things decay. And as correctly was pointed out, when you put a blanket over it, it just holds the heat in and allows it to bake. It's gonna bake the liner, in this layman's opinion. So, that's my position, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Solder.
Mr. Chairman, we're in the process of turning this down because of the financial assurance bond. My concern is, I don't want to mislead anybody in thinking that if you go and get the financial assurance bond, you can come back and we're going to approve it. So, I'm not sure if that's the appropriate action we should take today versus if we're gonna turn it down, let's just turn it down. Because I don't want to mislead them in thinking they're gonna go out and spend a lot of time and money and get the, get the bond, then they're gonna come back and go, I got my bond. And then we're gonna be sitting here again, going through lengthy debates. So, my only recommendation to the board today is, if there's a way to come up with a final decision today, let's do it. Let's, don't give them false hope. So, that's, that would be my comment.
All right. I've got several comments that I'd like to say, especially since for the last ten years I've been commissioner in the district, what all this is. First of all, leaks are like rust, and they never sleep. It's not like, well, while we're in operation, we're gonna leak, and when we're not operating, it's not gonna leak. It's gonna leak twenty-four seven, and I thank everybody for doing some figures on that. I thank Commissioner Lynch for his legal interpretation of this, and of course, our county attorney. However, this is a legal maneuver, and at best, it's a stopgap. And as Commissioner Solder referred to it, you know, it would come back to us again if that's our reason today for that. I've talked to the county attorney, I've talked to others, and no one can assure this commissioner or this commission that courts will not uphold our decision. In fact, I can assume that they may not uphold our decision and apply this permit. I put out the other day, as was noted, that perhaps a measure to purchase this property might be in order to at least consideration. A Pensacola News Journal poll, according to what I read this morning, says that eighty-seven percent of the citizens are against that. However, I wonder how it was presented. Do you want to see another dollar on your water bill, yes or no? Well, that doesn't, that doesn't explain the entire situation. I had several calls in the last couple of days with people that says, you know, I don't want my water bill raised. Well, let me allow, allow me the time to explain the whole story. As I said the other day, as Paul Harvey says, let's get the rest of the story. And then, those people were on board with it. In the past, this board has purchased houses that flood for help with mitigation. We bought property for roads from people because their property happened to be right in the center line of a road. I don't think it's anything unlike that. However, in the article, and that's why I planted this seed the other day, to bring this to a conversation, bring it out in conversation, whether it be a small franchise fee on a water tap, on a water, monthly water bill, or as was suggested, Vernon Compton with Florida Forever has volunteered to try to write a grant for the purchase of this. So, whatever it happens to be, it's my job as a commissioner to try to find an answer to a problem that we currently have, and that's why I put it out there. To say that, you know, we don't want that, and none of us want to see anymore. Price, everything's high enough as it is today, but my feeling still is if we purchase this property and put it in recreation or conservational use, whether it be county, Florida Forever, whatever, it is, we've sent a loud and strong message to the balance of the property around there that we don't want this in this area. We want to see you develop your property. We want to see it industrial use, but we want clean industry out there. We've changed. We've learned a lot in the last five years about it. We've seen a lot of opposition of the citizens not wanting there. But, the best thing about all this is we've got a person on the other side of the table that's sitting there willing to work with us on that purchase. It's not like we have to climb an uphill battle to get to that point. My belief is, we ought to take that opportunity. I don't know the amount. I was asking an email this morning, well, how much is it gonna be? I don't know that. I said the other day, the mechanics of it would have to be worked out, but that door is open at this time to at least investigate that. And it's my feeling that we should move forward with that investigation in any means of funding. Ken, I'm glad you're here today because, you know, I would have to poll East Milton Water and Fairpoint Water members of your board to see, you know, the willingness to do that. I'd certainly like to instruct Vernon Compton to try to see if there's grant money. Maybe it would be a combination of the two. Whatever it is, I see this, as your commissioner, as a way to get us out between a rock and a hard place. And again, send that message out there loud and clear. We don't want this in this area. If I'm wrong, or if somebody can tell me that there's no way on God's green earth that a judge is gonna turn this decision around, or fine for it different, or they're gonna come back in here with the financial assurance, then where do we go? So, that's, I'm pleading my case out there. I can't do this without the help of the citizens of this county and the water systems of this county. So, media will put it out there that way. Maybe they'll get another poll if they include the rest of the story. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, sir. You made a couple of good points, but I'd like to point out one place where I believe, in my opinion, there's a fallacy in the logic. We've purchased homes in the past and done other things because those properties were unusable in the hands of the homeowner. They clearly had that, you know, that's where they were gonna live, and we had to purchase those. Their alternative uses for this land in the hands of the owner, it isn't like they're, you know, only have one option, and that one option not being available to them, we've injured them. We're all layman without, with exception here with our colleague, who is an attorney-in-law. But, it's very presumptuous of us to presume what a judge would say about this. I'm just very uncomfortable with it.
But, are you willing to take that risk, which way a judge will go on? We, a judge?
I understand that we may need to buy it, but my point is, my point is, and as you're fond of saying, we can't walk up and down the hall and discuss this. We get to do this right here. My point is, Commissioner Cole, that I'm concerned that we set a precedent for, there are other options, and you mentioned those options are good ones. Maybe Florida Forever will buy it from them. Some other person may buy it from them. I just don't want to establish the precedent of the county being the relief valve.
And the precedence, I understand that, and I certainly don't want to set the precedence and have everybody coming to us saying, okay, you did it for him, do it for us. We've got new rules and regulations in place that pretty much cover us on that now for that type of facility. We've established a zone for that type of facility. So, my thought is, like I say, we're between a rock and a hard place on this one, but certainly, hopefully, the rules, regulations, ordinances that we've put in place would keep us from getting there again. And that, that's kind of where I'm at. And again, it's just, it's just an idea. I'm open to any suggestions, any ideas. I'm open to even having town hall meetings about this, but it's too important a subject to, you know, go off without exploring the options, and I'm not willing, you know, I can only hope and pray the way a judge would view this, but I can't give anybody an assurance of that. Purchasing the property gives me a definite, defined answer to it, that I know what it is at that point. And that, that's all. But, I'm certainly willing to discuss it, get it out on the table, see how folks feel about it. That's, it's just one idea, and that's how we, in this country, come together. Your idea, my idea, may both be bad ideas up front, but come together and have a good idea. So, I'm, I'd love to hear from everybody, and let's see where we can go with this thing. All right, anybody else?
Wallace Mahoot, fifty-five hundred Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I'm not saying that the idea to purchase a land is a bad idea. Do you realize that not only the person who owns, who wants to build that landfill would have to be reimbursed, but there is also another entity that owns the rights to the filter and the trees? So, then you're also going to have to pay that entity what that person feels that is worth. And if you can't do both, it's gonna be really, really costly, I think. So, that's the only thing I'm saying. You have two different parties that have stakes in this land. So, and this, the person who wants to build the landfill, let his permit expire, government moved on. He was told his permit was expired. Government moved on. You're allowed to make new rulings, new ordinances, and from everything I've researched, I just think it's gonna end up in your favor. So, I would ask you to deny the permit today. Thank you.
Wallace, can I ask you a question? Can you guarantee me it'll come out in our favor? And in all the discussions we've had over the last months about wellhill, wellfilled, wellhead protection, you've been, I mean, you and Ed have been the forefront of those. And I find it hard to believe you'll say it's gonna be very costly. My opinion, for our future generations, is whatever it costs, is, it's, you can't perceive that value twenty, fifty, twenty to fifty years from now. It certainly has to be reasonable. It certainly has to be discussed. And the mechanics of it, as I said, we won't know what the mechanics of it are unless we explore that. So, that's, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, I call a question.
State your motion again, please.
Move to deny the permit.
Do so without.
Not based on any other thing, just deny the permit.
The basis is in the record. Move to deny.
Okay. Do so without objection?
Without objection.
All right. Motion's moved to deny without objection. Hearing no objections, motion passes. All right. Now, we'll take a ten, ten-minute recess. Make it.
(audience shout) Hooray!
All right, we'll go ahead and get started again on the next item is number three. Recommend renewal of lease with Santa Rosa Kid's House Incorporated for State's Attorney and Guardian ad line him office space at the current rates. I'll move that without objection, hearing none passes. Item four is recommend proposal from Leathers and Associates in amount of forty-five thousand five hundred dollars for design oversight and inspection services for renovation of Benny Russell Park Playground area using Public Works Personnel. Comments or questions? I'll move that without objection. And I think my comments were on record from the other day, so I'll move without objection, hearing none it passes. Item five is recommend modification number two to the agreement of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, or EDO, for extension of the water Navar water wastewater CDBG project. Move that without objection, hearing none it passes. Item six is recommend resolution supporting regional management of the fisheries for recreational fishing, including red snapper. Move that without objection, hearing none it passes. Item seven is recommend Pace High Band Patriot Dash fun run on Saturday, May eleventh, two thousand thirteen, beginning at nine AM, using route proximate to Pace High School. Move that without objection, hearing none it passes. Recommend second annual Surf Warriors event on Navar Beach, May eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, benefiting the Wounded Warrior Project sponsored by the Florida Surf Association, pending proof of insurance. Move that without objection, hearing none it passes. Item nine is recommend one-year renewal of the agreement with E-CIVIS grant network in the amount of thirty-seven, three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for grant research monitoring and tracking report functions at reduced rates. Move that without objection, hearing none it passes. Discussion, item number ten is discussion of proposed policy revision allowing Pensacola Beach residents access to library card at no charge. We had a pretty hearty discussion about this other day.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Melvin.
I move approval without objection.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Salter.
Isn't, isn't it my understanding that a few years ago, we tried to come up with a reciprocation program with Escambia County, and they chose not to give our citizens the same no charge, if you will, as, as we do Escambia County?
If you remember when we started and we split from the, the West Florida is, is we allowed everybody to, anybody that would walk in, we allowed them to access to library cards at no charge. The Escambia, the, the, the West Florida system chose to, to charge all out of county residents fifty bucks a year for theirs and, and, and that included obviously Santa Rosa County. The, the, over time, and I want to say it was maybe a two or three-year period, we came back to the board, staff came back to the board to ask that you mimic the Escambia, the, the program to charge the out-of-county residents, simply because we were having the lossage, the, the, our funds were reduced, and the effect was is, is the Santa Rosa County where folks were subsidizing the out-of, out-of-state people or out-of-county people. So that, that was the rationale for the, the, the change. We've not gotten a chance to, to get with the Escambia County, whoever's going to be running that library system, to, to, you know, have some kind of reciprocity in there.
Mr. Chairman, my, my concern would be that, obviously Pensacola Beach is in Escambia County, so this should be an issue between Pensacola Beach, Escambia County, and Escambia County Commission on how they're going to handle that, and, and don't make it a Santa Rosa County issue when it's really in Escambia County issue.
Yes, sir. And I recall that conversation as well. We were having quite a bit of problems with getting library books returned. And have we gotten anywhere with the reciprocating process with?
We will. I mean, the, the, we've not, not since Monday, but, but at some point we can.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd like to point out that we all heard testimony Monday that the problems that we had with, with the folks on Pensacola Beach have been, problems that led to the problems have been resolved internally. We have better control, tracking, et cetera. We allow out-of-state visitors on Navar Beach the same privilege. They come to the Navar Library and use it. It's a small thing, and it's, I hope that Escambia County would offer reciprocity, but I hope we're a little bit bigger than that, and we're, we're supposed to all be moving forward in this regional concept. I think it's, this is, as I said Monday, this was requested by a group on Pensacola Beach. They get good service, they have, they rely on either having to go into Pensacola or the book bus coming to, to service them. And it's, it's handier for avid readers that have a limited amount that they can get from the book truck. It's a simple accommodation in my mind, and.
Am I correct in the fact that it's only going to be a one-year card, one year at a time? Is that what's going to be issued?
I don't remember that being discussed, but I'd certainly be open to that, to modifying it to that. I believe in your packet, that was part of the policy that we had.
One year.
You know, that Ms. Wilson had.
I think Gulf Breeze Library would more likely be the most affected library, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could, has the, the Gulf Breeze Library obviously would be the, the most impacted by this reciprocity proposal. Have, have the Friends of the Library weighed in on this?
Not that I'm aware of.
I would, I would prefer that we hold off on any decision until we run it by the Friends of the Library in Gulf Breeze and see what their thoughts are. And in the meantime, I would suggest that staff also contact Escambia County and see if they would be interested in full reciprocity between the two counties. But certainly, a lot of our residents work over in Escambia County, and their access to the Escambia County libraries would, would probably be easier than their access to our libraries. So if we could get full reciprocity, I would support it one hundred percent. But if we're going to do it piecemeal, I want to hear from the Friends of the Library down in Gulf Breeze. So I would propose no action on this.
I think Commissioner Salter supports that idea, so let's, let's table.
I will withdraw my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Let's table this and till, let's say, the second meeting dates in March. See if we can get somewhere with that work for staff.
I don't know what the meeting schedule is for the Friends of the Library. But once we hear from them, let's bring it back.
All right, fine. And this, this item, we'll, we'll take no action on this item today, which is item number ten. Item number eleven is discuss, discussion or review of the Land Development Code and proposed timeframe of review. We've asked each commissioner to highlight some items on the LDC that would come to bear rather than going page by page from, through the whole book. The items that I've stated in the past, I believe, should be the large acreages, the large partials that remain on Navar Beach, the tree planting ordinance after construction, construction restrictions, and also property usage. If other board members have other things. On construction restrictions, I've talked to several builders, and they would be willing to open discussions freely amongst themselves and come to the board with other, with ideas. I suggested that. First, the suggestion was for each of us to assign a builder, therefore it would become quasi-governmental and fall under sunshine. I suggested back to them that they just do this on a freelance basis, luncheon or dinner or whatever they happen to have, come to this board with, with suggestions on what items we've done in the past that could be deleted from restrictions and ordinances because they're outdated, and also what ones we may have put into place that are costing the buyer more dollars when it comes to building houses. We all know the crunch we're in. Thank God, we have seen a little bit of a boom, according to the January twenty-seventh article. So therefore, that, that would be one of the requests I would do, and, and ask Joy to get that information out to builders and stuff, that they could sit down at a round table and discuss that.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things I think we probably would do is, is, and again, we, I know we're talking about the, the processes, I would expect that we, we certainly would, would, would have, instead of getting through Joy, we would, we would expect the planning department kind of go through various stakeholders in that, and certainly builders would be one in, in, in listing that. That's the way that we've done it in the past, and it seems to work.
Okay. However you feel you could disseminate this information, and we can get the most input for the buck, or no bucks, because we, you know, this is all voluntary, we, rather than us spending taxpayers' dollars. The item of property usage came to bear. I'm kind of concerned, and I, and I found this out kind of the hard way the other day. I have some property, and I'd like to just park some cars on it as a transfer point. It was told in order to use it commercially, you know, I have to do a site plan, site plan has to be done by an engineer. I've run into this in the past with a gentleman that wanted to open a, a little nursery, and, you know, when you're starting something like that, like this out, you don't have a lot of money to spend for an idea that may falter, so I think we need to take a good hard look at some things like that in, in property usage, and maybe simplify some things, because a, a good description perhaps of your intended use of the property or something, but for somebody to be told, you know, you have to do a, a full engineer's site plan and stuff like that, if it's, what if, what if you got an acre alongside a road and you want to open up a fruit stand, something like that? So we, you know, we need to have a better understanding of that. And, and those are the four concerns I have at this time, so. Any other members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. I, I think any review of our land development code is going to be kind of ever-evolving, and we are, in essence, in a, a, a constant review of our land development code. I want to compliment Mr. Gomillion and his department. He and I talked after we last discussed this, and he sent me a copy of a survey that they send out to everyone at the completion of a project. They ask the, the contractors and, and the, the property owners what their experience was like. Are there any deficiencies that they see in that department or in our land development code, the process in general? And they invite that response back. So they're, they're constantly looking for ways to improve, not just their internal procedures, but also the land development code. And I, I know Tony's going to continue to do that, and, and, and he'll bring those issues to us as they arise. I think a lot of it's going to be driven just by what we hear, but we do need to bring specifics. I would, at this point, like to propose that we amend our land development code pertaining to permitting procedures for construction and demolition or land clearing debris facilities, specifically financial responsibility. I think we owe it to our citizens to tighten this up a little bit. I think we owe it to any applicants to put a little more specificity in there about what we, we require. I think we need to explicitly set forth in there that if a bond is the financial assurance that Santa Rosa County is going to be presented with, that it must be a separate and distinct bond from any DEP bond. I think, as was discussed earlier today, relying on Florida Department of Environmental Protections canned formula for coming up with the cost estimate for closure and post-closure care is insufficient for us. I think the bond should cover closure, post-closure, along with any intermediate corrective action that needs to be taken during the time the, the pit is being operated. And I think the amount should be determined by consultation with county engineering staff and the Board of County Commissioners, and after, after submission of all relevant documentation and cost estimates by the applicant for the permit. And I would like to designate that as a pending ordinance at this time, if we could, and get it noticed, whatever the timeframe is for, for us to have it at the, I guess, March meeting of the.
I have to check the paper, newspaper deadlines, but we'll get it before you as quickly as we're able.
Thank you.
All right. Everybody understands Commissioner Lynch's motion, and I'll move it without objection, hearing none it passes. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, any other comments, questions on our LDC? Mr. Salter.
Commissioner. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Salter, Mr. Cole. I was just going to say, and, and don't, for the folks at home, don't mistake this as having disposed of, of review of the land development code. That was just one section of the land development code, and we're going to go through it, we're going to take input from the public, as was discussed with the, with the builders at large. And the overall goal of this is, is to make it more user-friendly and make Santa Rosa County more pro-business than it is right now.
Mr. Chairman. Like Commissioner Lynch said, land development code is ever-evolving. It should change as the economy changes sometime as much as possible. But I would like to remind everybody, back in two thousand and nine, when I was the chairman, I'd asked Commissioner Williamson at that time, who was the chair of the Public Services Committee, to go through a review process, and he did, and we did make some changes at that point in time. And I'd also like to remind everybody who may be watching that, I think Commissioner Lynch had already said it too, we get numerous compliments in the Public Services Department as we do the Road Department and Engineering, but especially Public Services, because most of the time, that's your first point of contact for the customer. Over the last two, three, four, five years, almost all of the larger companies that have come to Santa Rosa County, they have been extremely complimentary of, of working with our staff in Santa Rosa County. As Commissioner Cole and some of us attended the Visioning twenty fifteen workshops over the last, I've only attended two, but Commissioner Cole's been there for about a year. One of the things that the consultant has consistently said is that it is much, much easier to do business in Santa Rosa County than it is, and I'm going to pick on my buddies to the, to the, to the east or west, Escambia County. So that, that's a huge compliment to, to our staff, when a consultant, a national consultant, through input from different people recognizes that we do a good job in Santa Rosa County of, of customer service for, in this case, our businesses. So I don't want anyone to think that we don't do a good job, because we do. Now, do we need to continuously review what we do? Like any corporation, every year you should do some kind of review process, and I'm sure they do. But I just didn't want people to lose sight of the numerous compliments that we get for our staff, and we are recognized, at least through the region, as a great place to do business, and is part of the Vision twenty fifteen report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Salter. Any other comments at this time? Yes, sir. Oh, yeah. Come on, come on up here.
Carl Hudgens, thirty-four twelve Barkwood Drive, Pace, Florida. I, I, I really appreciate the direction that you're going with some of this. We just got through talking about a very contentious, large issue that affected potentially a hundred thousand people in, in our, our water quality, drinking water quality, and all kinds of other issues that affect people around it. And I really don't want to muddy the water, but, but as a small land owner, and I consider twenty-two acres small compared to, you're talking a hundred sixty acres here and five hundred acres here and different things like that. But I would like to, in speaking of this land development code, I would like, going back, our problem in America is our economy right now. I mean, that's the overwhelming thing. If you ask people, what's the problem? And I've lived, don't want to tell you how many decades, but several decades in America, and I've been involved in different small businesses. And as a young person, teens and early twenties, I remember going to a machine shop that was behind a man's house. It didn't bother the neighbors, the neighbors understood, and he, he worked his machine shop there. I remember a man who started a motorcycle shop. Now, this was, admittedly, this was before the quarter-acre lots, but a lot of people have more than a quarter of an acre. And I understand communities that want to, neighborhoods that want to be taken care of and don't want any kind of that activity. But there are a lot of other areas. What I'm saying is, with our land development code, maybe we need to open it up a little bit for the mom and pop, for the family business. We're, we're actively courting large businesses, and that's great, because large businesses hire a lot of people. But the fabric of the American economy has always been the guy that goes out there and starts his own business. He starts working on something in his shop, and then he, he, he expands that, and then he's able to buy a little piece of land and, and expand that shop or whatever. Or he might stay in that machine shop on his one acre behind his house for, for decades. He might just do it for the rest of his life. So I would like to see some things opened up to where the mom and pop, the, the people can actually start a business from, from a one-man operation on up. And, and I think the land development code, where we've gone statewide, has been a big problem for our national economy, and we've, we've done that in all fifty states now, I think, is that, I think we, with our ability for, or our penchant for neighbors to control the neighbor's property, have kind of killed our economy along the way. When you get a lot of these little businesses in the fabric, then they have to hire CPA, and they have to hire other people, and it all grows from grassroots. So please keep that in mind when we're talking about our land development code. Going back to my personal, and I think Mr. Cole mentioned this, with my land right on Highway ninety, I've pretty much been shut down when I've gone to ask them about what's involved in putting that, putting in a little farmer's market here, or what's involved in doing a little something here. It's pretty much been overwhelming and just shut down any initiative I had. One of the big things, and this is probably maybe not land development code oriented, but you guys have a lot of influence in a lot of areas. I was told if I want to do something on my land other than put in two houses, I was going to have to put lanes, and it was going to cost me like a quarter of a million dollars to put in the turn lanes off Highway ninety to do something on my land. So those things pretty much shut down what I want to do, you know, anything I want to do with my land. So then they come along and say, well, you're not doing anything with your land, so maybe we'll just put it in conservation. And they kind of beat you down with all the anti-incentives, and, and then you just, then people give up. And that's what's happened with our economy in America. So I'd like to see Santa Rosa County step out a little bit, be a little different from the state. I know a lot of this stuff comes from Tallahassee, and, and then they have planting and development schools at Florida State and different places, and they teach people how to come in here and run our counties. But I'd like to see Santa Rosa step out a little bit and try to come up with some way to favor the mom and pop and the, the grassroots businesses. So, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Carl, before you get away, don't, don't be offended when I say this, but a lot of my calls that I get is where people are running businesses in their home, and, and they, they're just not respectful of, of their neighbor. Sometimes it's music. They just simply don't understand how to be a good neighbor. And unfortunately, that's what leads to rules sometimes. And I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm, I'm just saying that a, a lot of people, when they move someplace, they, they, they have expectations, and if you open up certain things next to them, they just don't know how to be good neighbors, and that's unfortunate.
I think a lot of that, and, and you're right, we do get into that, and that sort of started when the government started taking stronger control over, over local, small land use neighborhoods and things. Because I watched this evolve since the seventies through, and the way they handled that before was neighborhood, when you moved into a neighborhood, the, the developer had restrictions in his neighborhood. But since the, since we've kind of moved into this, and I'm not criticizing anybody, we've all lived through these last thirty years and watched this thing evolve, you know? So a lot of that, and, and there is a problem now that we're into it, how can we back away from it a little bit? And, and that is a problem. And you're right, anybody starting a business, we just talked about, something somebody wants to do with their land affecting people for miles around, and, and so those things have to be taken into consideration. But a lot of times, for the government to actually just step in and be the umpire in all these situations, maybe allows a little of that to build a little more than it would if people knew that, hey, I'm, I'm buying this land, it's not in a, it doesn't have a, it doesn't have a covenants, and the guy next door might have to. But what I'm saying is, with us being there as a county and codes, it encourages a lot of the things that people would normally work out between themselves, if they couldn't just go and get the code guy to come get him in trouble, you know? So it, it's, it's, I'm not, I don't really have a good recommendation. I'm just saying, let's try to, try to keep in mind the principle of, of maybe less government intervention, and maybe people could work things out. But you're absolutely right. I've seen it, and I've heard them down here arguing, and people do have things. But I think we worked things out a little better at one time when we had to, so. But I, you're right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Tony.
Yes, just so that we can make sure we meet your expectations, I'm under the assumption that if we receive more specific feedback, I think I understood Commissioner Lynch's specifics. As we receive additional specific area you want us to look at, or someone else wants us to look at, then we would typically, we would bring that, we'd put that on the agenda, on our public services agenda, and for, for approval to move that on to the zoning board. Is that what we would expect in this case? That is, you bring us specific items, you want kind of formalized and looked at? We would, we would bring you something back and show you what's going to be forwarded to the zoning board? Is that consistent with what we would be expected to do?
I, I would think so, that, you know, just like Commissioner Salter said, this is going to be an evolution, so I think it was kind of unfair on, on us to put a caveat in there and set a timeframe.
Okay.
I think each one of us, if we have a problem or foresee a problem, we, we should come to, you know, your department or this board meeting, lay that problem out, and then give you time to work through it and come back to us.
Okay.
So I, I think that's a good way to handle it, rather than be site-specific and, and time-specific on it. That, I just.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes, sir. I think that.
I think, uh, the, the time, I think, I'm the guy that added it, and that was just the time to begin the process, not to finish it. We just need to, you know, you can't, you can't finish it till you start it.
Commissioner Lynch put a good start in, I think. I think he, he opened, opened the gate right up there for us, so...
Mr. Chairman.
Don.
One other comment, then I'll be quiet, but I, I want to remind everyone again that public services, developmental services, about a year ago, started working closely with the, all the different chambers of commerce in Santa Rosa County under a governmental advisory-type committee made up from those chambers of commerce. And, and that's what they do. They look at things that may be a hindrance to business. Matter of fact, the model that our, uh, developmental services and the chambers have put together, now they've gone to Tallahas- they've been asked to go to Tallahassee, which they did, and present to the governor's office what we're doing in Santa Rosa County with our developmental services and working with our business community. So we already have a, a, a foundation in place for a lot of that to happen. So I would encourage especially the business people, uh, home builders, uh, because like you said, if you appoint, now you're in the sunshine. But just get involved with that governmental group through the chambers of commerce, because they work closely with governmental, I mean, uh, our development services on an ongoing basis. But we are recognized as a model in Tallahassee where we are working with our business community.
And I think now that we've expressed the desire to hear from, we, we probably will.
Yes, sir. If I can just add, the, the one thing that we always, we try to ask, and that is, because we hear it, uh, you, as you do, that less regulation. It's hard for us to pin down what that means. It's hard for us to bring you something to act on. And so I always try to ask people, "Give us something specific that we can act on, uh, more than less regulation." So that's, that's, I think, the thing that we need to ask, is you're, ask those questions, is, you know, drill down and, and, and find out what section, like Commissioner Lynch referenced, what, what section are we talking about?
And I'll express that as, as we all should, as we're getting these phone calls or emails. All right, thank you. All right, we'll close. Okay. That was item number eleven, so, uh, I think no action, I think. Well, we did take action on it, on Commissioner Lynch's motion, and so we'll move on now to item number twelve. Item twelve is meetings. Unless otherwise noted, the meetings below are to be held in the boardroom of Santa Rosa County Administrative Center. These meetings are all listed for you on hard copy and on our website. You'll visit that for all the different meetings that we have. Uh, I'm not gonna take time to read them off now, but, you know, they are posted for the public viewing. Moving now to engineers' report. Uh, item number one is recommend proposal from HDR Engineering, Inc. for FD EP required tier-two sampling and analysis at Central Landfill. We discussed this the other day, and I'll move it without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item two is recommends soliciting bids for construction of Central Landfill methane gas collection and control system. Uh, I think something's come up since the other day that I do have a question on, and I'll, uh, ask Ms. Jones. When we go out and develop this, uh, solicitation for bids, I would hate to be hamstrung on low bidder. Can we ward that? I mean, you know, sometimes low bidder isn't the best bidder.
And, and our ordinance requires you always to select the best bidder.
Okay. So the ordinance would have to be changed before we can...
No, sir. You, you always...
Or is that state, that's state?
...and probably should take the best bidder. You're not required to take the low bidder.
Pardon?
You are not required in any circumstance to take the low bidder.
Oh, okay. All right. I, I misunderstood you then. I thought we were requiring low bidder. So if this board feels that, uh, Company B can do a better company job than Company A, but there are a little more money, we can make that decision?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I'll move this without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Number three is an add-on that I had for engineering. Uh, we've got currently a subdivision in the south end of the county that's called, uh, yeah, what happened in my paper? Duncan Ridge subdivision. And they would like to begin construction of some homes, and we, uh, we've told them they can begin two homes, but no more so than that. And I passed out some information. There is a tick list currently, uh, from our engineering department. I spoke to Mike Schmitz yesterday in engineering that said that none of these items on a tick list concern construction of homes. I spoke to the developer and also the, uh, also spoke to the, uh, person contractor, which is Edwin Henry, uh, about, uh, he, they, they want to go ahead and get started. Cut short, short of it is they want to get started building homes, more so than two, maybe five or six at a time. Uh, the tick list doesn't concern any of the housing, and I think this board would put a caveat on there that absolutely no home could be sold before a CO is obtained, which would basically say you can't get a CO until you fulfill all the tick list from engineering. I don't see what the difference would be in building two homes or forty homes, because this means, uh, and the tick list should be fulfilled within the next two weeks. And I've been told by the contractor that he could put seventy-five people to, to work tomorrow, uh, on homes, uh, rather than waiting two weeks. And knowing how bad people need to get to work, knowing that building the houses has nothing to do with the roads and the infrastructure, and, and putting a caveat on there that you don't put any homes on the market, or certainly sell homes till you get a, a certificate of occupancy, I don't see no harm, no foul in allowing them to pursue, pursue building five, six homes instead of just one or two. I just, I can't find a caveat in there that makes any sense on limiting it to two homes or whatever. It's their investment. They'd have the time and money in there surely before they, they'd want to get them homes on the market as soon as possible, so they would surely, I would think, fulfill the tick list. So I'll put that out there. I, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we allow that, but I'd like to hear comments if anybody care to...
I would like to hear from our county engineer if he, if he has anything to add. Otherwise, we'll discuss it over here.
I think Angie was fixing to address some of the legal issues, and then the engineering can backfill once she presents what she was going to present to you.
And, and I'm sorry to say, maybe I don't know enough about this particular situation to address all the legal issues. I do not know the basis for which two homes would be allowed. I have to assume that perhaps those two lots, and I use that loosely because without a plat, we don't really have lots. I have to assume that those lots must front some existing county roadway, because absent a plat, the, the other lots in the subdivision aren't going to have, have access, necessarily, certainly not county access, because we won't have accepted that plat. I, I, I'm, I wasn't aware of the issue before this morning, but I'm, I'm unclear why we would allow two lots, two, two houses. Um, and then I have to worry about utilities and the dedication for the utility right-of-ways and that kind of thing if a plat hasn't been approved by the county.
I can address the issue relative to the two lots. It, it relates to the fact that in Santa Rosa County, you can break up lots by meets and bounds. And so as long as you have the minimum road frontage for a development, you're able to pull...
On an existing county road.
On an existing county road. And I think this one does have a hundred and forty feet, and so that's where they establish minimum seventy-foot widths to, to building permits. Because absent recording the plat, you can't pull a permit, because you have to have a valid, uh, lot of record to be able to pull a building permit. And that's where the two came in. Had the gentleman owned two hundred and ten feet, he could pull up to three. So that's where the two lots came in. Um, and so open up to any questions the board may have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, my concern is a little bit more basic than that. What's the rush? Why don't we put this in on a Monday meeting when we can staff it? I would like to see the plat. Remember, we went through the exercise of deciding, uh, about the accessibility of emergency vehicles, and, uh, Commissioner Salter insisted that we, uh, do that examination on all plats. And I agree, that's absolutely, uh, critical, that's part of our responsibility. We just haven't done those things. Uh, this is first I've heard of it. Uh, the staff, uh, made a few comments on the, on the foot of that handout you passed, and, and some of them, you know, uh, they're not game breakers, but they, they certainly need to be addressed. There's issues that, uh, I, I'd just like to see this go through the staff and, and come to us with some recommendations personally.
Well, again, if you read it, the, uh, on, back in, on the twenty-eighth of January, received the final, uh, rene- received initial final plat submitted, so a plat has been submitted. Uh, it just didn't make a cutoff that it'll make in two weeks. And again, I submit to you that, you know, everything we're seeing is road construction, density of the road on this tick list and the punch list. Again, it has nothing to do with construction of the homes. It's their investment. If they choose to build five homes with the caveat that they cannot sell or market those homes until they meet these requirements, I, I'd like to see seventy-five people go to work tomorrow, Monday, and not wait two weeks. You know, if you're in that type of business, or you're a frame or whatever, two more weeks without work, you know, is, you know, it's just detrimental. I, if, if in fact we had nothing on this, it'd be different. But we, we do have a plat. Uh, it doesn't appear like anything on the, on the plat affects the, the lot sizes or stuff like that. That's, that's all I'd...
Okay. Well, I may be mixing apples and oranges then, because if I understood this very brief discussion, that's why I would like to see this go to a Monday. Uh, he, he has inherent rights to his property on, on the county road without regard to this plat. He could go ahead and put those people to work tomorrow if he wanted to on two houses. I want time to make sure that, that the plat, uh, is in complete accordance with to include scrutiny for, uh, emergency vehicle access, uh, turnaround, the whole, the whole thing. Uh, and I don't see the rush. He, it, it doesn't slow him down a bit. He can start two houses, I guess, as soon as he can pull the permits, if I'm understanding the situation correctly.
Well, it's...
I'd like to understand that that's either true or false. I understand it or I don't understand it.
I think based on my limited knowledge, that is correct, that there, these two meets-and-bounds parcels are located on a county road.
Well, and, and meets and bounds are, are, you know, are off the table, but this, this particular contractor likes to start four, five, six houses at a time, and, and certainly two houses aren't gonna put seventy-five people to work. And again, I go back to, as we discussed earlier, these are rules and regulations that are making price of things go up, making, you know, withhold, you know, holding back on putting people to work. Uh, I, I just don't see no harm, no foul if, if in fact they, they're willing to invest their money in building four or five houses, six houses at a time, knowing they can't market those houses until they meet, meet our criteria of doing so. I mean, they may have twenty houses out there ready to put on the market and the curtains in the windows, but until they meet this, uh, all these comments, all these answers to, to our engineering department, it don't matter. You can't, you can't put a for sale sign on one or take it to payment. So that's, and, and as it was explained to me by the contractor, you know, there's, it's, it's, uh, it's more cost-effective to do five or six houses at a time in, in this particular case than it is one or two. So that, that's my concern. I'm not looking to, uh, do anything to try to put seventy-five people to work. And we all know how critical that is today.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Williams.
You know, I don't think we need to start a precedent here. Everybody else, we make them go by the rules and regulations, and if it's only gonna take two weeks to take care of the problems they have, I would have no problem today if, if it's, if time is of essence today, approving the go-ahead once our engineering department checks off that all things have been taken care of. If we could do it that way, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But other than that, I don't think we need to start doing something, because I know how contractors are, since I am one, but, uh, I, I do things a little bit different. But if you give me hints, I'll take a mile. I, I, and if you can start two houses, sure, you might want to start six, but two at this time is better than none. And, uh, two weeks is not earth-shattering, gonna make that much difference in my opinion.
I was asked to present this to the board. I, I, I like your idea of, uh, let's go ahead and move this. That way they don't have to wait two weeks. I see what you're saying. They, if they can accomplish this in the next two or three days, and they don't have to wait two, two weeks to come back to the board, I believe that's what, is that what I understood?
If that, if that is possible. I mean, I, I need to, just see if that would be acceptable or not. But it would be based on that criteria, that it's accept, being signed off by the engineering department.
I might add that before you all accept a plat, there are requirements beyond those listed here. They're the legal requirements. The, um, a title opinion has to be submitted with the plat that's acceptable to us. The lender must be involved if there is one, and I don't know enough to know whether there is or not. Along, there are legal requirements in addition to those addressed here, so certainly we would want to comply with those before we accept a plat.
And that's just on the two, two lots you're talking about there?
No, sir. I'm talking about on the, the plat of the entire subdivision.
Well, I mean, all requirements be met. All, all kind of requirements be met before construction on these particular lots.
Mr. Chairman, I, I hear county, and then there, what I think I hear the attorney saying is there's some state requirements. Are, are we, are you talking, be very specific. You talking, we have to advertise things? Would you explain what these other requirements are?
Typically, when a plat works its way through planning and zoning and engineering, one of the last places it's, it lands is on my desk with kind of a, a final drawing after these things are worked out, along with a title opinion or title commitment, something like that, that demonstrates ownership of the property, lien status, that kind of thing. And I usually look over those things as, as close to the last step. Those are statutory requirements. They, they, they are in the, the state statutes.
Our land development code also has provisions that says there are certain ways in which a plat can be recorded, one of which is the developer develops plans, specs, gets the DO, constructs all of the improvements, and then his engineer certifies them complete to the county, and he records the plat, and the county accepts the improvements. This subdivision cannot meet that. Uh, it, matter of fact, uh, the punch list has yet to be developed. The, the final inspection was conducted at nine o'clock this morning, so I have no idea what that would entail. The ordinances, our ordinance does provide for the, the developer to post a security. That can be in form of a bond, cashier's check, or some other security acceptable to the engineer and the county attorney, in which he has to post that as a surety that he will complete the improvements. Uh, I have no idea what that would be, or even if the developer would agree to that, you know, today. So those are the two ways in which we record plats. Once the plat's recorded, then he's able to convey lots and pull building permits on all of the lots within the plat.
Right. Could I build upon Commissioner Williamson's suggestion? Can we just give, I guess I'll ask Angie this. Can we authorize staff to go forward with this, with this subdivision as quickly as they can meet everything they need to, whether it be two days from now or two weeks from now? In other words, it doesn't have to come to the, back to the board. It just, when they complete it to fulfill it to the final point that you mentioned, can we move, allow staff to move forward with allowing them to move forward?
No, sir. In the end, it is the Board of County Commissioners that has to accept a plat. Now, you know, staff can continue to work it, help them work out their issues, their pencil lists, that kind of thing, certainly. And I think staff will do that without any action from you all. You know, that's what they're working on. But she, this, you are the ones who must accept a plat, which includes accepting the roads for county maintenance, accepting common areas, you know, a host of things that might be depicted on that plat.
So why can't, why can't we do that today pending them fulfilling that, those requirements instead of waiting two weeks for it to come back?
Well...
In other words, we're giving, we're giving it our blessing, provided you guys get everything, all their ducks in a row.
I guess you would be blessing something you've not seen. I don't believe you've seen a plat. I've not.
I can't remember where we've ever looked at a plat, except in very rare situations over the ten years I've been on this board. Normally it goes, our engineer recommends it. We don't sit here with big old drawings posted everywhere up on the board and...
But you could.
...study it. Well, we could, but if we're gonna start doing that, then we'd cut down a few more trees and make some more paper, because...
And I think maybe the difference is that the reason you don't do that is you rely on your staff to have reviewed it, and you are taking their recommendation that everything has been met, so that you don't have to do that. But certainly, the drawings available, you can check it. I know, I believe at least one of you has... I know, I believe at least one of you has recently said, hey, I want to look at this thing. So you, you can because one exists. I've not seen one and, and I don't, I couldn't opine or recommend to you all that you accept it based on the legal requirements because I don't know that they've been met.
So the answer to my question is you don't think we should do it until all these are met?
Yes, sir. I think you should take action when.
That's why, that's why I asked the question.
Okay. All right, and I'll withdraw that motion.
All right. Public Service Committee, Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is recommend submission of three applications to Florida Forest Service Volunteer Fire Assistance Grant Program and authorized execution of relevant documents. And I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is recommend renewal of vehicle lease agreement with Pensacola Bay Transportation for 5311 Transportation Disadvantaged Program, and I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is recommend acceptance of $2,000 for short sale in lieu of foreclosure for ship second mortgage on property located at 6559 Kennington Circle, and I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four is recommend subordination of mortgage of ship home purchase assistance loan for property located at 8950 Timber Lane, consistent with board policy, and I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item five is recommend subordination of mortgage of ship home purchase assistance loan for property located at 4361 Willow Street, consistent with board policy, and I do so without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
That concludes Public Services.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. Commissioner Williamson, Public Works, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items today. The first one is recommend resurfacing the following roads in District Two at an estimated cost of $125,394. Baxley Road, Fox Run Street, Casa Grande Circle, West Gardner Street, and Wildwood Drive, and I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is recommend paving the dirt segment of Baxley Road in District Two at an estimated cost of $3,990, and I move approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williamson. Now Budget and Finance, Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nine items. Item number one is recommend a bid in the amount of $260,570 from Beard Equipment Company, Incorporated for bulldozer for central landfill as a low bidder meeting specifications. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is recommend budget amendment 2013-84 in the amount of $69,250 for covered drainage system across private property adjacent to Woodbine Road in exchange for an easement from Area Two. Impact fees, 56, $5,672 in electric franchise fees for road and drainage at $12,478, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three is recommend budget amendment 2013-90 in the amount of $65,000 for left-turn lane project on Shemukla Highway and Wallace Road intersection from the electrical franchise fee for road and drainage fund to include $10,000 from Southern, Southern Southland Construction Incorporated. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four is recommend budget amendment 2013-91 in the amount of $75,000 for a left-turn lane project at Shemukla Highway and Willard Norris Road intersection, and this will be from the franchise fees for road and drainage fund. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five is recommend budget amendment 2013-92 in the amount of $392,800, which will recognize BP Marketing Grant and allocate that grant for expenditure in the tourist development tax fund. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number six is recommend budget amendment 2013-93 in the amount of $66,920, which will rec, which will recognize recreational trails program grant and a match for the Baghdad Mill Site Park Improvement Project and committed, but please add, and this comes from District Two Rec Fund. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number seven is recommend budget amendment 2013-94 in the amount of $110,684, which will recognize program income and interest from the Florida Trust Fund Administration and allocate those funds for expenditure in the ship and housing departments. I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number eight is recommend budget amendment 2013-95 in the amount of $110,500 for the design, construction, inspection services and materials purchased for Vineyard Russell Park Playground renovation. And we, that, that will come from a combined.
It's out of the general fund.
I'm sorry. From the general fund. All right. And that comes from the general fund. If you would just add that, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number nine is recommend county expenditures and checkbook register. I reviewed those, Mr. Chairman, and have my questions answered, signed off, and put them on your desk.
Thank you.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Hearing no objection to that last one, it passes. All right, I'll take any comments from other board members, county administrator, county attorney, or any further public forum. I've got one information item. On Tuesday, February 26, 5:30 to 7 o'clock at the Baghdad Community Center on 4591 School Street, we'll have a black bear workshop. We've had a lot of calls, a lot of situations currently with, since we're encroaching on the black bears area, as citizens and as, as population continues to glow, grow, we're seeing more and more reports of black bears in our community. State Representative Doug Broxson is, is putting this on in conjunction with District Two. We'll have people there from Florida Wildlife Commission, and it pretty much should be a good workshop if you got, you know, you know, who to call, what to do, that type of thing. So we're, we'd like to have everybody come out for that that has any interest in that. And coming to think of it, that's on my anniversary date. I'll be married 41 years to that wife I didn't buy a card for today. So I thank everybody for attendance today and we are adjourned.